Okay, so my name's Ellie Wade Mayfield. I'm one of the Integrated Services Managers for the Children and Family Wellbeing Service. I cover Heimborn, Rossendale and Ribble Valley. Previously, I was Preston, Charley and South Ribble. So I'm getting around the county a little bit, but I've come back home now. I'm from Rossendale originally. So I'm here to talk about the Children and Family Wellbeing Service. As many of you will know, we went through a remodelling in January this year. And that remodelling was part of a county council-wide sort of look at transforming the support that we offer for children and their families. And as Peter was talking about in her previous presentation, the idea is that the child is at the heart of everything that we do. So our remodelling was in response to the implementation of the family safeguarding model through Children's Social Care. It was in response to the discussions and the processes that were happening with regards to the team around the school. And what we wanted to do was combine the Supporting Families Programme, which many of you might know as troubled families, working together with families previously to target our support to those families facing barriers around worklessness, exclusion, health issues, crime, domestic abuse, you know, the toxic trios that we hear of all the time in our work with families. A multi-agency early help strategy was written and launched following from some extensive consultations in 2019 through our partners People2. And as a result of a lot of these consultations, the remodelling was produced. And one of our key priorities was to look at the Early Help Assessment or the CAF, as we all know it and love it. We've looked at the CAF and we have had a working group together with feedback from children, young people and their families. And we've sort of re-done the assessment. I'll talk a little bit about that as we go through. So the idea is that we work together better, it says, to enable our collective early help offer. The whole idea behind this remodelling and the team around the school and everything else is that we work together, we work in partnership. The children get the right support at the right time, delivered by the right people. They only have to tell their story once. And we do our best to make sure that they're being supported. So our new offer is quite different from our offer previously. We have moved towards an intensive family support offer, really. You'll see on there, 53% of our resources are now directed at our family support work. And there's a new document being published, the new Continuum of Need called Working Well with Families from next week. And I'll show you the windscreen in a little bit. And we're now focusing the extent of our resources at families that are at level three with complex needs. We get our referrals in from MASH, from the front door. We get our referrals from Step Down, from Children's Social Care. And as part of the remodelling, we also took responsibility for the family time or what was previously known as contact. So it's supervised contact for parents who no longer live with them. The idea being that they're, you know, they're working in our neighbourhood centres, we have that link with social workers. And there's also that Step Down link if the children and the parents are reunited and they're then supported under a plan. We have our community offer. Peter's talked obviously a lot about the team around the school. And our community offer is very much in place to support that, however it may look. The support workers will have a small caseload, but that caseload will be directed from the work that comes out of the team around the school. We'll be working in a multi-agency way. We'll be supporting these panels. And we'll be responding to the needs of individual schools by offering school-based group work. So that's one of, we have changed, but we are still be able to offer that. We call it warranted variation or that local need. You know, we'll listen to our schools, we'll listen to our partners to identify what that local need is. And we'll be able to direct our resource to support that. We've also re-established our targeted youth work. It's not the Young People's Service as was before. However, we have 7% of our staffing resource directed purely towards our youth offer. We are getting back out there on the streets and we're being met with open arms. We are able to bring young people back into the centres now. We are able to be responsive and offer thematic group work to meet the needs, you know, to listen to what the young people are telling us that they need. And as much as we possibly can within the, you know, the constraints that we work towards, we can adapt and amend our delivery to meet the needs of these young people. We also offer one-to-one direct work sessions with vulnerable teenagers and that's linked to our casework. But that's also linked to the team around the school. So if we're working with high schools and there's an identified need that a targeted youth worker could offer to that young person, then we can step in and support that offer. So you'll see from what we've both said so far, everything's very much intertwined and everything's designed to be able to support in a multi-agency way. And the final element of our offer is our neighbourhood offer. So we've still got centres. We haven't got as many as we did. And during COVID, we've possibly got half as many open. In Rossendale, we have the Maiden Centre in Bakerup open and we have the Zone, which was the old fire station in Rottenstall. We are able to do our family support from there. We are gradually building up our group work delivery from there. We're obviously talking to our partners in VCFS and our statutory partners, Virgin Care, 0-19 service to start bringing them back in to be able to be sort of a family hub or one-stop-shop for our families in the neighbourhoods that need them. And our group works will consist of our early years staff. We're currently redeveloping our curriculum framework for age six to 11. The majority of our staff are trained in a programme called Triple P Group Work, which is around parenting. And we deliver the Freedom Programme, which is around domestic abuse. So we're focusing, but we're still able to adapt to the need of the neighbourhood that we're working in. So this is the new Lancashire Continuum of Need. It's been formally launched on Tuesday next week. It was supposed to be formally launched some time ago. However, it was pulled to be re-looked at and a small consultation. But you'll see there, it's changed considerably. The statutory support or Children's Social Care support is now targeted at level four specialist support. So there's still child in need and there's still child protection. They just sit at level four statutory. And the majority of our resource will now sit at level three intensive support, led by a lead professional with an early help plan. I think it's going to take some time to get out of the CAF TAF language. And it's to meet the needs of vulnerable children and young people whose needs are complex, in range, depth or significance. That's sort of quoting from the Continuum of Need guidance. This is a pan-Lancashire Continuum of Need, so it covers Blackburn with Darwin and Blackpool as well. So we've moved quite significantly, I'm pointing to my screen, you can't see, from the level two, which is our universal. That's not to say we don't work at that level when we're looking at the team around the school. But the majority of our resource is going to be directed at level three. So these are our group offers currently. We have a send offer. We have an offer to the team around the school that's obviously been developed. We deliver parenting and family support and we deliver that right from baby to teen. We've also got an SEND, which is the stepping stones element of Triple P. Family Transitions, which is parental conflict and every relationship matters. And the lifestyle is around childhood obesity. So we've got quite a sort of range of evidence-based groups in our arsenal for parenting. We've also got freedom and then we can sort of move down the curriculum to our baby group. We're focusing a lot on our school readiness, so linking in with private providers and local nurseries to find out, you know, what are our children, what are our very young children saying? Are they ready for school? Do we need to direct our resources to that? And then we've got our targeted youth support. And they've been working very, very, very heavily on the evidence-based groups. They've been writing programmes. You're going to ask me what trap and impact possibly, and I can't remember. But it's around mental health, it's around physical health, it's around resocialisation post-COVID. There's a lot around the young people's voices. We will have some LGBTQ groups. And we've got a very, very strong participation element, which is our youth council. So you'll hear a lot more about youth work particularly out across Lancashire as we move forward to lockdown restrictions easing, hopefully. So that's just a little keyboard of our targeted youth support. The idea is that it's blended. We've got enough staff to respond to need. We've got centres that will accommodate our young people. We have embraced this technology, Zoom, WhatsApp, Skype, all of the online mediums to be able to deliver our work to young people. In fact, for those who work in family support will know, we've had access and we've seen state and conditions of more young people's bedrooms via WhatsApp calls than we have ever. It's been a really good medium. So we're going to have to offer a blended approach to supporting our young people as we go forward. So this is our offer to the team around the school. Again, as the team around the school model develops, we will amend and adapt to meet the need of that team around the school. But initially, we're looking at having senior family support workers in each team around the school area or cluster, or however we'll group them. And they're going to provide consultancy advice and practical guidance to our education centres and partners. And this can either be through the forums or directly through pastoral staff, head teachers, school mentors. We'll provide direct work and evidence-based programmes and interventions to address intrafamilial needs. We've got the youth workers that are going to be linked. We can adapt our group work programme. So it's the warranted variation there. It's one of our favourite phrases. Multi-agency forum, which Peter was talking about, that's being developed in Preston. We will still continue to support any families that come via the team around the school who have complex needs at level three alongside our partners. With the idea being that it just improves our early help partnership offer. And it improves the outcomes for children, young people and families, which is what we're all here for. I know I'm really, really whistle-stopping through this, but please ask any questions. And my contact detail's at the end if anybody wants to get in touch. So the Early Help Assessment update or the CAF. I said earlier, we did some work on the Early Help Strategy in 2019 and it was really motoring until we all went into lockdown. But we didn't lose sight or focus of that work and that did help us form this new remodelling. And what was coming out at us loud and clear from children, from families, from schools, from anybody was that the CAF was hard work, it took too long to complete, it was onerous, it was a barrier to getting support for children and families. And that was the last thing that we needed. So we had a small working group together between September and December last year. And they co-designed and simplified the assessment to reduce duplication. The principles of the assessment remain the same. It's consent-based, it focuses on needs. It's obviously a holistic assessment and at the centre of it all is the voice of the child or the young person. And the e-learning package is being written at the moment and it should be available for partners in September 2021, September this year. We were hoping that the Early Help Assessment would be ready earlier and the document actually is. It just hasn't been embedded into our systems yet. So from the 14th, which is Monday onwards, Children and Family Wellbeing Staff will start to use paper, I say paper, word documents of the new Early Help Assessment, because we need to get our practice in because we're going to be supporting the launch of the training and everything else. So from Monday, we'll be hopefully moving towards working on the new Early Help Assessment. And we'll be supporting partners when the Early Help Assessment is actually launched. And obviously, I've talked earlier about our staffing resources aligned to enable us to do this. This is a quick glance at the Early Help Assessment. It's not yellow. The yellow was just on there as it was a word document. It will look different when it's on the system. The idea is that it's family-friendly. We use a strengths-based approach. All too often, we talk about, oh, you know, this is risky, that's risky, this is bad, this is having an impact on the child. But we don't often look at, well, what's good within this family? What are their strengths? What, you know, what support is there that this family can offer from relatives? You know, what strengths the children have? And we rely on the children telling us that. It's there to support families to recognise the change cycle and their capacity for change. So Peter's example of this family, in just a six-week period, they went through that. And they recognised that they had the capacity to change and they started to do that with support. And the idea behind this assessment is that it's holistic, it's going to have input from everybody and it's their assessment. They need to be able to recognise that they can change with support. And it's about empowering them as well and placing ownership on the family to say, this is yours. We're not going to be doing for you or doing to you. We'll be doing with you until you're in a place where you can do it yourself. We're talking about embedding trauma-informed practice. Sorry, Peter, I keep referring to your presentation, but it's really relevant. She talks about the children modelling the behaviours of the dad. And that will be clearly because throughout their childhood, they've been subject to, whether it was physical violence or not, they've been subject to this kind of behaviour, this violence, this abuse, this cusp of criminality, which has obviously caused some childhood trauma and they're then modelling behaviours. So we're training our staff to understand that any kind of trauma in anybody's life has an impact on their behaviours in the future. It's focusing on an action plan and support, but it's the family plan. It's called a family plan. It's for them. It's for them to identify what their needs are and then for the professionals to identify who can help support them. It's all about the voice of the child and young person. And we have a radar, which is our model that we use to identify where children are in their behaviours and their lifestyle and their support and where they are then at the end. So it's measured by outcomes. So our principal pathways for support currently are from the one, the front door, MASH. And as an authority, we're looking at a one-front door, which is where every referral for children and families in Lancashire will come eventually. And it will be triaged out to the right service, again, reducing duplication and making sure the children have the right support. We have an online e-form, so we can get a direct request for support from partners. The identification of need for these children will come from the team around the school meetings, from channel panel, from MARAC. And families can also self-refer for community support.
Hi Ellie, it's Jackie. Can I see where we're up to with time? I'm just aware that we've got another speaker.
I'm nearly done.
Thank you.
So this is Rossendale's service structure. So I'm the Integrated Services Manager, also covering Heimborn, Ribble Valley. We've got two team managers, Alison and Catherine, and they manage a series of senior family support workers that goes right down through to our family time workers and our delivery centre support workers. And that's all done.
Thanks Ellie, sorry about that. Yeah, as ever, we timetable things and then it doesn't take very long before we've lost our timetable.
I do apologise.
No, it's not you. Don't worry. We can never get these things right. I think we're going to move straight on then to listen to Karen, who's going to take us through the fairly new initiative now around mental health support in schools. And I think, yeah, Phil, great, you're setting that up for us. Thanks Karen.
Let's just put everything on so you can hear me. So, okay, so the Mental Health Support Team for Children and Young People in Education, often shortened to MHST. Often the support is confused for schools, however, we do work in education. So thank you for inviting me today. And I hope I can provide you with some new information about this. It really is an exciting new project and inspires some creative thinking in the room, wherever your room may be. So I'm the clinical lead for the MHST team for East Lancashire. You want to go on to the next screen? So this, well, with black line, whatever. So this is, people ask why a new service? So there's been a lot of government feedback about transforming mental health, particularly in children and young people. And it builds on the five-year future view and the future in mind. So the aim to deliver mental health training for mental health leads in schools, which schools have been desperate for, for a long time, and creating teams across education settings to provide early intervention and prevention. And the idea is to support mental health whilst complementing existing services and working in partnership with those, with the children at the centre of what we're doing. So we're actually also piloting a four-week waiting times to get young children into services quite quickly with us so that they will be seen within four weeks. Do you want to go on to the next slide? It might be a bit quick this, because I've been asked to speed up. Right, this is, I like this. This is the Blind Men and the Elephant. And it really sums up what I think that has been going on for quite a long time in that so often, services feel that they're actually on their own, especially schools. And actually, everybody's doing their bit, everybody's doing their part, using their knowledge, but we don't always join services up. So this programme is aiming to join up, integrate health, education, social care and voluntary community social enterprises. And I think that that's really, really needed. So as I've come from adult mental health, this is something I have wanted for years, years, decades. I wouldn't even go so far to say, which shows my age. So when schools can identify needs, they're putting a referral into the appropriate service and then what? You know, there's waiting lists, it doesn't meet criteria, people are not poorly enough and nothing changes. Parents feel abandoned, they're sort of against the system, so to speak. And school is often left holding the problem. They feel unskilled in managing situations and they really don't know what to do. Now, we can't solve everything, but we can start to do things differently for changes to start to happen. And I think listening to that video this morning was a really good, a really good start for me. Can we have the next slide, please? So what is a missed team? I'm saying MHST. We have a team lead. We have four educational mental health practitioners who deliver low-intensity CBT. So they deliver guided self-help. Then we have high-intensity cognitive behavioural therapists. So we're working around that CBT model. We typically cover eight to 10,000 children. And we have four teams in East Lancashire and two teams in BWD, Blackburn with Darwin. So we have a team in Rossendale and they're picking up five secondary schools at the moment. So the idea is we get in early, anything that's seen that the child's worrying in class, not engaging, not engaging with children in the playground, or actually that they come and say, I'm not, I'm really struggling with this. And the idea is that we get the right support and we help them to stay in education. Okay, so next slide, Phil, thanks. I presume it's Phil that's moving us through. So this is mental health. So the idea is we work on promoting good mental health. And so we're working on promoting through psychoeducation, health promotion. And one of the things here is the risk factors are never-ending. There will always be something that someone can relate to on that list. And I could give you pages of potential risk factors. But I use the word potential as not everybody who has a risk factor will have an impact on their mental health. There's a huge variation in resilience. And we know that if we actually get in early, then actually things will really start to change. So we know that there's a power within schools, there's a parental power at the school gates. So we're looking to develop a whole-school approach. We're working with education and school staff. And actually trying to empower and capture the community and raise mental health awareness, using schools as that conduit. Next slide, please. So this is bio-psychosocial model of mental health. And I put this in just to show the variations that it's not a case of just picking one area and thinking it's going to work. So we could pick the psychological aspect here. And I know that being a therapist, that you can work on that bit. But actually, if you don't look at the other factors, then actually what you do is you can put a sticking plaster on it, but you might not actually solve it. So I think somebody brought up earlier before about ultra-processed foods. And I do a lot of research into the gut-brain axis and how what you eat affects your mental health. We know that people who use alcohol or drugs will have an impact on their mental health. And we know also things like peer relationships, family, that all has an impact on your mental health. So everything is linked, which is why I say we cannot do this on our own. This has to be a joined-up programme. So if you put the next slide on, thanks Phil. I need a little thing to go like that, don't I? So these are the types of interventions that we're working with. So social anxiety, huge in secondary schools, absolutely massive. You know, everybody's judging me, everybody's looking at me. We're getting generalised anxiety. You would have that so starting at age 10, 11. So don't think your primary schools are immune from this. Depression and low mood, you know, anxiety will always tip into low mood. You know, if you can't tell your friends what's going on in your home life, how do you actually deal with that? Simplephobias, we're all, I'm scared of spiders, but hang on. Panic, a lot of panic happening, a lot of OCD. We're having a lot of tics being identified, where children are sort of touching things, blinking, grinding their teeth, we're doing facial movements. And that's falling out. So, you know, that's falling out of anxiety and these are happening early on. Self-harm, emotional difficulties and sleep. And we all know that if you don't get your sleep, it's like a form of torture. So that's as adults. The same thing happens for children. But what we get with children is we get a different presentation compared to adults. So adults will often dismiss a child's fear or a child's worry or something that's happening in their life. And children do not actually, they struggle to differentiate between a worry and an actual fear. So they will have the same physical response when they're worrying about something, as if I was told to do a bungee jump. The same happens. So often, many of these disorders, and I say disorders, or you don't even have to diagnose them really, but anxiety in general, are left until adults are to receive an intervention. And at that point, they're very, very difficult to shift. It's quite hard. So half of all mental health problems emerge before the age of 14. And we've only been open to referrals since March. And the horrifying thing is in three separate schools, we've had three separate boys of around 10 years old who have been suicidal. And one was actively suicidal. And, you know, because he couldn't cope with the things that were going on in their lives. So, you know, people say, I had one parent who said, well, children don't get stressed. And it's like, well, they do. We've had two children identified in secondary schools with early signs of psychosis. So we are getting to that early intervention and prevention. And I'm just so pleased, just in the three months that we've been up and running, that we're actually starting to identify these people before they get to 16, before they get to 18 and 20 and their lives are affected by other coping strategies, whether that be drink, drugs or criminal behaviour or whatever. Next slide, Phil? Can I have the next slide? I think I've put the next slide on. I hope I've put the next slide on.
Have you got it?
Yeah. So these are the types of things that we do. And this is a list, which is a bit difficult. So we have three functions under this government initiative. And this is permanent money. This is here to stay. This is not going to be taken away. And they're investing long-term in this. We're actually on wave three and they've just set up waves nine and 10 in Lancashire. So there are other streams coming on. So this is really positive for us. So we'll do signposting, providing timely advice to schools. So, you know, it could be that I've learnt this morning about the Shiva Trust, that we could signpost to them if we've got a 16-year-old who wants to have some career employability issues. We then look to develop a whole-school approach. And every school, every school is individual. If I tried to compare any of the schools in Rossendale, they would all have their differences. So our whole-school approach could be around exams. It could be around drinking drugs. It could, alcohol and drugs. It could be around a multitude of things. And it's for the schools to decide what they would like. We deliver one-to-one group interventions. We liaise with anybody, I will liaise with anybody that's out there, trust me, to try and get the child to stay in education and to get the right support early on. We're based in education settings. So we're not, we're not in a clinic, we're not in a GP. We are in the school. We have a room in the school. We work alongside the pastoral people there. So we are accessible in that respect. The educational mental health practitioners work closely with the pastoral leads. So they will discuss cases. They will talk about what they can do, who they could go to, what else is out there. So they will discuss cases, they will talk about what they can do, who they could go to, what else is out there. And we also identify the needs of the school and their staff because we know that teachers are incredibly stressed. We know that they're, I mean, they're just coping with exams and everything that's gone on there has been hard for them. And we can write, we can direct the staff to, to agencies. We can deliver something regarding training to support them as well. Okay, I think it's only a couple more slides, I hope, I think. So this is a bit of a busy slide, but this is the type of thing we're doing. So we do assemblies, we do staff training, we're working with PSCHE classes. We're working, I've just linked up with the educational psychologists about emotional-based school avoidance because that is an issue. And they're training our team in how to work with children who don't want to come into school. They're rolling out a toolkit. We've involved the Duke of Edinburgh scheme with what we're doing because we found that most secondary schools are actually having the, the Duke of Edinburgh scheme in. And they're actually aiming to work with disadvantaged children as well. And that gives those volunteering opportunities. It gives that opportunity to go and learn a new skill, a new sport, a new activity. So we're linking with them. We do in-school promotion of mental wellbeing. We do, well, we work with the pastoral care, we work with anybody and everybody about mental health. So, sorry, this is speeding up, I feel. So the next slides are actually about the Lancashire Emotional Health in Schools and Colleges that we're also linked in, in our programme. So they provide training to teachers to actually help teachers with their, with things around attachment, how to talk to distressed children, communicating, using attachment theories in, in interventions. And their lead is Richard Slinger. So at the moment, their input is free of charge. And there's a list, so we, we link into that. We, so they're helping the teachers, we're helping the children. Okay, next slide. These are Richard's slides, I'm very grateful for him for sending me them. So it's how to better understand and support young people's mental health. So this is supporting the teachers to develop their staff and their confidence and to actually start implementing a whole school approach. So he's there to support the designated mental health lead and he's actually looking at what they can do to get the government funding to actually have that additional training as well. So next slide, I think is Richard's as well. Yeah, so that's, that's what they've done in Lancashire at the moment. And they're based, the clinical psychologists, they're based at Lancaster University and they feed into the clinical psychology doctoral training programme. So they have been overwhelmed when they've put their Zoom training out, which is really, really good. So it's, it's really complimentary to the work that we're doing. And I'm hoping that everything will come together supporting the teams. So I think, I think that's it, I think just one last, yeah, this is what we've had back. People say school is like another family, it's fantastic for our young people. What we want is we want more young people actually coming and helping to design this service. I have, I literally have a blank piece of paper, so I can put on it anything that we want. We, whether that's school, parents, children, I want more people coming to us. And nobody seems to really want to actually think that their voice is worthy of being heard. Yes, it is. You know, I've just heard from those young people on the, on the thing at the beginning and quite a lot of the things that they were actually saying. I think that we are actually trying to address and actually take forward, making things accessible, developing skills for them and giving them opportunities. So that's, I think I've just got one more slide, which is a thank you. And I'm sorry, this was at breakneck speed. Yep, so please contact me. I'm sure someone will send my details out, but we want to know how we can develop the community to support these young people. If I said, we've had so many referrals in now from schools, they're, they're just flooding in and we're only looking at mild to moderate interventions. So, you know, this is really, really good. Sorry, I hope my enthusiasm for this is, is shared and then comes across. So that's all for me, thank you very much.